Who said that?
Bad joke. They're not all winners. Yeah. He needs to dig, he needs to dig a little deeper. Yeah. I'm pretty sure there was a joke in there.
Usually I'm a little better.
Well, we just had a long meeting. Don't knock yourself too much about it.
Is Clarence here or no?
I don't have him, sorry. I think Caitlin's doing it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So maybe Lisa then, but she has it on that.
Are we ready to roll then? Calling to order the Monday, September 22nd, 2025 meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Patterson, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Black? Mayor Protem Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henan?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Vilani?
Here.
Mayor Dean?
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Henan. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Patterson, please call the roll.
Black? Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Dean?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to the public comments section of tonight's meeting for items that are not on tonight's agenda. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. You will have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jeffrey Tong, former Berkeley resident and now a resident of Royal Oak. But I am still a member of the Berkeley Historical Committee. I'd like to remind everybody of something we all just said. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, under God. Those two words are important because they were never part of the Declaration of Independence until Congressman Charles Oakman introduced a bill into the U.S. House of Representatives to add those two words. It was passed. It was introduced to the United States Senate. It was passed. Dwight Eisenhower signed it. And now we all say those two words when we repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. And why do I bring this up? Because the Honorable Charles Oakman now resides in Roslyn Park Cemetery. He's one of the many notable people of both national and local fame who live in Roslyn Park Cemetery. Roslyn Park Cemetery is a very important part of Berkeley. One ninth of our space is Roslyn Park Cemetery. And there are 15,000-plus people that live in Berkeley, but there are 37,000-plus people who reside in in Roslyn Park Cemetery. So if anybody says how many people are in Berkeley, we could say 53,000 plus. You know, we move up the list of larger cities in the state. I bring this up because October 18th, a Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, there will be a tour of Roslyn Park Cemetery hosted by the Berkeley Historical Committee. There will be 10 different stations spread around the museum, I mean around the cemetery, where people will be stationed. They have explained to everybody what's notable about that part of the cemetery. There are some fascinating stories about the history of the cemetery. Berkeley doesn't even exist until 1923, but the cemetery gets created in 1904. And it was created specifically because people felt there should be a major cemetery about halfway between Detroit and Pontiac. And when they had the dedication of the cemetery in 1910, the mayor's of Pontiac, the mayor's of Detroit were there and they spoke. There was a special car for the local DUR, the transit system, that stopped at the cemetery and had a special car just for bodies that were being moved to Roslyn Park Cemetery. There's just all kinds of really neat stories. The mausoleum, which is rarely open, will be open that day. That was the first mausoleum in the state of Michigan designed by a noted architect. The tickets are $15. It's the major fundraiser for the Berkeley Historical Museum this year. Tickets are available now at the museum, at the city treasurer office, at the Berkeley Public Library, and at the cemetery. So we invite everybody to come out. People will have a choice, having trudged around that cemetery several times in the last few weeks. It's bigger than it looks. People can walk, walk around from spot to spot, or they can drive their car and park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, boy.
Dinner's done.
It says 3:00. It looks like it's ready.
Is there a mute button? There you go. Thanks.
What are you talking about, Tom?
My name is Jim Worthheimer. I'm a resident of Berkeley. And I just wanted to comment on the condition of the tennis courts, which is very bad. They came, actually, there were chunks of concrete that came, or the court that came up. They came to fix it. Whoever did it, I mean, it's not even level. I went by there when they had a tennis match, the high school. And the parents were, they were embarrassed at the quality of the courts. And I know, you know, the school has their money and the city has separate money, but, you know, I play all over South Oakland County, and I'm embarrassed to bring people to our tennis courts. And I know, you know, maybe none of you play tennis, but they're in real bad shape. That's all I want to say, is they're in bad shape and they need to be fixed. Tennis is a great sport.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comment, I am closing the public comments section. Ms. Patterson, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, September 8th, 2025, and the special city council meetings on Monday, September 8th, 2025, and Monday, September 15th, 2025. Item two, warrant list. Matter of approving warrant list number 1414. Item three, ordinance number 0725. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of Berkeley, Michigan to amend section 14-36, outdoor uses in connection with Class C liquor licensed establishments of the City of Berkeley Code ordinances to address incorrect zoning ordinance references. Item four, ordinance number 0825. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of Berkeley, Michigan to amend Article II definitions, Article VI site design-based districts, Article IX general provisions, Article XI sign regulations, Article 14 off-street parking loading and access standards in Article 15 site plan review procedures and requirements of Chapter 138 zoning of the Berkeley Code ordinances to add definitions for business services and live-work units, to clarify site area governs site layout, to clarify the reviewer for fences, to allow ground-mounted solar energy systems in residential districts, to clarify regulations for residential driveways, to modify the width requirements for attached garages, to clarify regulations for detached accessory buildings and swimming pools, to clarify regulations for window signs and temporary signs, to clarify clear-vision zone requirements, to add regulations for areas of residential parking and recreational vehicles, to clarify requirements for where on-street parking may be counted as individual business parking, and to clarify requirements and procedures for pre-application and preliminary site plan review. Item five, proclamation number P2325. Matter of proclaiming September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And item six, proclamation of repeat 2425. Matter of proclaiming September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month.
Well done. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Are there any changes or additions? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll. Sorry, Ms. Patterson, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black? Mayor Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Patterson, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Item one, recognitions presentations. Matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Patterson to read P2325.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan proclaiming September 25th as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, each year in the United States, an estimated 14,690 children from birth to 19 years old are diagnosed with cancer, equal to about 40 childhood cancer diagnoses each day. And whereas, each year worldwide, there are more than 275,000 new childhood cancer diagnoses. And whereas, although a five-year survival rate for childhood cancers has reached 85%, an estimated 1,050 American children under the age of 15 still die each year from cancer. And whereas, during this awareness month, advocates, nonprofits, healthcare professionals, researchers, and families impacted want the people of Michigan to know the prevalence and reality that children facing cancer experience each and every day. And whereas, up to 90% of childhood cancer survivors will face at least one chronic health condition later on in their life, not limited, but including heart, liver, lung damage, infertility, secondary cancers, and growth deficits. And whereas, the causes of childhood cancer are largely unknown and more studies are needed to understand which treatments work best for children. And whereas, there are hundreds of children being treated for cancer in Michigan. And whereas, Berkeley is a caring city that supports children and families. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1 that the month of September 2025 is hereby proclaimed as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley, proclaimed this 22nd day of September, 2025, at a regular meeting of Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Baker to read P2425.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan proclaiming September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas, September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness of surrounding suicide prevention resources that are available in the community. And whereas, World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September 10th. And whereas, suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, AFSP, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among persons aged 10 to 14 and between 20 and 34, and is the third-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 and 19 in the United States. And whereas, according to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, each year more than 49,000 people die by suicide. And whereas, organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, and the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 1-800-273-TALK, or 8255, work to help individuals in crisis and to provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas, in 2020, Congress designated a new 988 dialing code to operate throughout the existing National Suicide Prevention, to operate through the existing National Suicide Prevention Lifeline to help expand the crisis care system to better provide direct life-saving services to all in need. And whereas, every year, thousands of individuals die by suicide, leaving behind friends and family members to navigate their tragedy of loss. Often feelings of shame and stigma prevent them from taking, from talking openly. And whereas, Oakland Community Health Network, OCHN, is committed to being a zero-suicide organization and cultivating a network of providers who are actively engaged in the zero-suicide philosophy. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1. That's the month of September 2025 is hereby proclaimed as National Suicide Prevention Month in the City of Berkeley. Section 2, the City of Berkeley calls upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of suicide prevention and the need for appropriate and accessible services to assist individuals in crisis. Proclaim this 22nd day of September, 2025, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Patterson, will you please read item number 2 on tonight's regular agenda?
Item 2, motion number 8625. Matter of approving a Downtown Development Authority event, Buchley Monster Mash Block Party on Coolidge between 12 Mile and Catalpa on Saturday, October 25th, 2025, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. and authorizing the road closure of Coolidge on that date. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to the event date.
Is there a motion to approve M8625?
So moved.
Support?
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Vilani. Ms. Van Black?
All right. Well, we have Lisa Kempner here, and so I'll pretty much throw it over to her. But this is an event that I think we all know takes place every year. It's a wonderful event that we all look forward to. The applicant, we have sat down, appropriate city staff has sat down with Ms. Kempner, as well as the DDA Director, Nate Mack. And so we worked through all the details for the road closure, as well as the estimated cost to the city. So all of that is aware, and it's all in the memo. So the estimated costs to the city at this time are 40% of what we estimate those costs to be, DPW and public safety-related. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Kempner to talk about the event.
Hi.
Hello.
First off, I want to say I'm sorry that the room wasn't decorated in Halloween for you.
It's okay.
But, um, yeah, so we are upon Buchley, and we have a month full of fun stuff. We have our DIY skeleton party on the 5th. We have our witches' night out on the 9th, ghost chase on the 17th. And then everything winds up and ends with trick-or-treating and our monster mash on Coolidge. Nothing terribly different from past years, except that we did note that last year, Ken Moore didn't get a parking only on one side sign, so we made sure that that was in the order for this year. And besides that, we will have food trucks again this year. I have four, possibly five, that are on board. And yeah, any questions?
Do you want to tell us who they are, or is it a surprise?
Um, you know what? I delegated it.
Oh, nice.
Right?
That's a skill.
I'm, it, it's a difficult skill. We have, I have a puppy. The dog ate your homework, right? Yes, the dog 1,000% ate it. I don't think I have them in my notes right now.
All right, never mind.
Yeah. It is a variety, and I made sure that it wasn't Mexican or chicken because it's right there at Catalpa, and I didn't want to, like, fight with the food vendors that we have, so.
Understandably.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from council?
I'm just excited for it. It's always a great event that you guys do, so.
Just a big thank you, that's all.
And I'm just, oh, I'm just going to take a moment to really let you know how much I truly appreciate you on behalf of council. And I'm just even going to go so far as to say, most of the residents of Berkeley, your hard work on this, Lisa. And, and I know you have a crew of volunteers. But you attract people who want to do this because of your enthusiasm and, and the amount of time and energy that you put in. And so that speaks highly of you, and it reflects positively on the DDA, and so, well done again. And I can't wait to, to see the event this year, all the, all the pieces of it.
Thank you. I, I am really lucky. It is a super fun committee. And all you bunch of people that's watching, if you want to join, then like, find me or email Nate or somebody, and we'll get you involved.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any, did you want to add anything, Mr. Mack?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah. I'm just excited to see this event for the first time and really thank Lisa for all of her work. She's been showing me a lot of different ropes on how this event works and, and how things go. So I'm appreciative of Lisa and everybody else. That's, that's a part of the event, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Ms. Patterson, will you please call the roll on M8625?
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Mayor Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Patterson, please read item number 3 on tonight's agenda.
Item 3, motion 8725. Matter of authorizing the city manager to sign the secondary manufacturer's opioid settlement form.
Is there a motion to approve M8725?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Van Black?
Similar to the last meeting, we have another opioid settlement that's been settled, and we need to participate in if we would like to join into it. So it's been reached, it's been, they're calling it the secondary manufacturer settlements. It's, it's with several manufacturers. I won't read all their names, but they're in the memo. And in order for the city to participate, we must execute the participation form by October 8th. The participation rate amongst political subdivisions will be used to determine whether participation is sufficient for the settlement to move forward. If it moves forward, the amount the city receives will be based on the final allocation percentage. So I'm, tonight's recommendation is that City Council authorize myself, the city manager, to sign the secondary manufacturer settlement participation form.
Thank you. Mr. Chris, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing with respect to this item, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or discussion from council? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Henan.
Yeah, just one thought. The amounts of money that come in are fairly small, and I don't know if there would be opportunities for us to partner with other municipalities to pool the money for something that would have more impact. I have nothing specific in mind, but just something to look for and consider.
Sure, and it's a good suggestion, and we can certainly look into that. Okay. All right. Ms. Patterson, please call the roll on M8725.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Patterson, we are at our communications portion. Who will go first?
Uh, we'll start with Councilmember Gavin.
Okay.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I know some of my other colleagues will briefly touch on it, but had the pleasure of being at the Michigan Municipal League Conference this last week, had some great seminars on creative solutions to stormwater management issues, community art, revamping corridors for housing and transit. So as always, just a thrill to be able to get to not only spend time with, with colleagues up here to look at ways to bring back ideas to improve our community, but also be able to spend time with people around other elected officials and, and local government officials from around the state, so. And then for Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the next meeting will be October 9th at 7:00 p.m. at the community center. And for the library board, the next meeting will be October 15th at 7:00 p.m. at the library.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates as well. The Historical Committee met on Tuesday, September 9th. Judge Derek Meinike visited to share the ideas around a memorial display in honor of our Judge, the Honorable Jamie Wittenberg. Tickets, as mentioned, are on sale for the upcoming cemetery tour. The date again is October 18th, and in case of rain delay, the, the rain day is the very next one, Sunday, the 19th. And please remember that new holiday ornaments and mugs are available in the museum, at the library, at City Hall. And for more information, please visit BerkeleyHistory.com. The Downtown Development Authority met the very next day, Wednesday, the 10th. Nate Mack, our, our new DDA Director, discussed his 90-day plan. We talked about winter barrels and planters and perhaps banners throughout our downtown, particular in West 12. And, wait for it, Buchley planning is indeed underway with plans for Dorothea Pocket Park to be reactivated during the month as well. And also, as mentioned, at last week's MML convention, I too picked up some ideas, particular to the downtown, attracting businesses and some other safety ideas around making the downtown more walkable. And for more information on that and more, please visit DowntownBerkeley.com. And finally, it was James Madison, who would later become the fourth U.S. President, who wrote the following declaration. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free, the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." So especially as we continue to slide into authoritarianism, please be sure to hug somebody you love. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yes, the tree board is meeting right now, and on their agenda is a status update from over the summer and planning for the coming year. The Zoning Board of Appeals had no cases in September, but they will have four cases to hear on Monday, October 13th. And then, my colleagues also attended the Michigan Municipal League Conference. And two big takeaways I took away were some strategies on attainable housing. How can we bring housing that the average person in Berkeley can afford? And also some ideas with artificial intelligence. I'm meeting with one of the speakers later next month for just brainstorming ideas how to bring artificial intelligence to help boost productivity in local government, both here in Berkeley and statewide. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Nothing to deny, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow, the Planning Kitchen, uh, Planning Kitchen Commission will meet. Must be hungry. The Planning Commission will meet tomorrow here in Chambers. The Beautification Advisory Committee will meet on Wednesday. They also did a cleanup yesterday, cleaning up the community center, kind of the area in front of the senior center, if you drive by or stop by, look at that. And then across the street here at Public Safety. And the Parks and Rec, their five-year master plan is, survey is open. They have about, a little over 200 applicants, or, results already. Can't talk tonight. But please take it if you haven't.
Thank you. Councilmember Vilani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone in the Environmental Advisory Committee who sponsored the native plant sale on Sunday, and to everyone who came out and purchased plants for your yards. The next meeting of the Environmental Advisory Committee is
The next meeting of the Environmental Advisory Committee is on October sixteenth at six-thirty p.m. on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. This Thursday, the twenty-fifth, is the Bukley, thank you, pub crawl from five to eleven p.m. Tickets are thirty dollars in advance and forty dollars at the door, that includes a very groovy t-shirt and recovery bag. There is a shuttle taking you around to all the locations that are there, so that way you don't have to pub crawl and drive. The theme is the seventies or Halloween, so bring out your best gear and get ready for a good time. And then one last reminder for everybody, as I am not seeking reelection, I want to remind everyone that this Wednesday on September twenty-fourth at six-thirty p.m. in Council Chambers, the League of Women Voters is hosting their annual candidate, Council candidate time for you to come and see. We have two of our members, Councilmember Baker and Councilmember Hennan, who are seeking reelection, and there are three newcomers, so with one open seat, remember that your vote is your voice, so this is your chance to get out there, to hear from the candidates, and make those good informed decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Van Black?
Good evening. Mostly I just wanted to expand on Bukley and the closure of Dorothea. So as Ms. Kempner mentioned, during Monster Mash, Dorothea will be, will be a highlight of that area, I think, or a highlight of that event, but we are going to, we've identified this is a great opportunity for another pilot temporary closure of that space. So we think we had, we saw the presentation a couple meetings ago, the survey results came back wonderfully. It, it said a lot of what we, we assumed it would, but we were really looking for any feedback, any feedback on ways that we could do it differently, whether people liked it, what issues they ran into, ran into. That survey is still up and available for people to participate in if they would like to, but based on that, we wanted to plan another temporary closure. This time it'll be in partnership with the DDA and the Buk, the month-long Bukley, the month-long celebration of all things spooky, silly, and spectacular. The closure of the road is done via a temporary traffic control order, which is typically issued by Public Safety, so it does not necessarily require a vote of council. That said, we've confirmed that there is definitely a desire to continue these temporary closures, as long as we identify times when it makes sense to do that, right? And so I think that this partnership with the DDA is the perfect time for us to do that. So we are going to be closing the street the weekend of nine-twenty-six, so up, this upcoming weekend, and then we will open it November third. And so it'll be just a little bit longer than a month. The idea is that we have time to prepare it, which Ms. Kempner will be largely involved in. And it will be open during that month, or, I'm sorry, it'll be closed during that month. It will have many of the same amenities, so the seating that you saw, the lighting, the games, all of that stuff will be put back, back into place. And then there will be a mixture of activations that are mostly being done through the DDA and hosted by the DDA throughout that time, again, in association with Bukley. There are a couple other things that we are internally working with the DDA to, to do as well, so we don't have an exact schedule yet, but we will. And I do want to note that this time around, it will not be activated quite as heavily as we did during the initial pilot program. The survey results indicated that many people use the space passively, and that aligns with the assumed and desired use for a public space of this nature. We want to get people there to help them understand how the space can be used differently. That's not to say that we don't want to activate it, we do, we want to continue to bring people to that space and utilize it for, for cool things that bring people together, right? Bring the community together, but also it's to show people how to use that space, and we saw that a lot, when there weren't activations happening, people were in there with their laptops, or the kids, they would get their ice cream, they'd go sit out there, so we're hoping to see more of that, because the activations are crucial for fostering downtown vibrancy in our downtown, but the primary goal is to encourage people to use the space in new ways. And so, again, anytime that we can identify, until we have the funds, we have no idea long-term, right? There are plans long-term, and we have a conceptual plan for that, and it's quite expensive. So at this time, our, the short-term goal is to really continue to identify times that when we can shut this down and utilize it as a public space versus a road, but to only keep it shut down during those periods of time. And this is just a perfect time for it. So you will be able to, you can follow the BerkeleyMI.gov forward slash Dorothea page, which will be updated. Right now, you're going to see the June through July closure and the events that took place. It will be updated as we solidify what we're doing for the month of October. And then also, you can, you can follow DowntownBerkeley.com, and the Bukley events are, it's a lot, if you just Google Downtown Berkeley Bukley, it'll take you to the page, and it will show you the events that the DDA is hosting. Quite a few of them will be in the Dorothea space, so there's two different places, and then obviously following the city and, and the DDA on Facebook and other social media, you'll be able to see what our plans are for that space. So more to come, but just that little announcement.
Thank you. No, that's good to hear, and it sounds exciting, I look forward to seeing, you know, what this next closure brings. Mr. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, no legal report tonight.
Okay, thank you. So as my colleagues have mentioned, I spent a few days in Grand Rapids last week at the MML convention, and, you know, attend, we all attended different sessions, but housing seemed to be a topic that was mentioned multiple times in multiple sessions, as well as thriving communities, and, and I will say that Berkeley is thriving, and we will continue to do so. And I attended the Michigan Association of Mayors breakfast, which is always a nice time to be able to connect with my counterparts across, from across the state. And then the Michigan Women in Municipal Government Luncheon, and I know it sounds like I just was eating all the time while I was waiting, but I will say the luncheon is, there's always a program or topic, and, and this year it was identifying your leadership style, and so we did this in groups at our tables, but, and it was really fun to just talk about issues, leadership style, how we've impacted our community, problems that we're currently struggling with, and so it was just, it's, it always feels good when I go to the Capcom or to convention, because you come home with renewed energy, and you always get some great ideas, whether they're going to apply for sure in Berkeley or not, but it gets you starting to think, and what could be different, or I learned about this, how could we apply it here, so, sorry, City Manager Van Black, we're, we're all going to be, you know, bombarding you with these new ideas. And then finally, I, I have to mention that I received two letters from Rogers Elementary Students, they must be doing a unit on social studies, but I'm telling you, it made my day. So to Isaac and Emily, I love that you're engaging in local government in this way, you just, you warmed my heart when I got these letters, I mean, they were adorable, kids printing, one was taped up, so no one could see it, but they came through the mail slot in my front door, and it was the best mail that I've received in a long time, so thank you for your thoughtfulness and for reaching out. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Council, Councilmember Valani. Ms. Patterson, would you please call the roll?
Black? Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
There you go.
Both of us, yes.
Uh, Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the Monday, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.